I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for September 9, 2025. This meeting can be viewed live on Northern Berkshire Community Television Station, Channel 1303, and will be posted to their website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at HTTPS, www.youtube.com/AtNorthAdams. Just click on the "Live," then on the 2025.09.09 City Council Meeting. And to remind everybody, this meeting is being recorded. Will the clerks please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
Oleskiewicz?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
All members are present.
We have a quorum. And now I ask everybody to stand for a moment of silent remembrance. Tonight, we remember Susan Frew. She was a reading specialist at the Greylock School. And I also want to remind everybody that Thursday is the 24th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks. Over 3,000 people lost their lives that day in New York City, at the Pentagon, and in Shanksville, Pennsylvania.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for Paper Number 12,00513, a petition from National Grid, Project 311 65216, requesting a public hearing for two relocations of jointly owned pole locations on Ashton Avenue and Tulay and maintain underground laterals intersecting public ways as required to make connections with poles and buildings. We do have a letter from Mr. Lascarbo. Cards were mailed to the abutters, and the abutters were notified of this public hearing as well. And with us tonight, we have Mr. DeRose from National Grid, if you'd like to speak to us on this project, please.
Good evening. So we're relocating a couple of poles. Pole three needs to move 20 feet for the proposed driveway that the mill's installing. And then we're going to move pole two just another 10 feet, just to keep it in line, so we don't need to add any additional anchoring to the road.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the council that has questions? Okay, anybody from the audience wish to ask any questions? Hearing done. I'm going to close the public hearing for 12,00513. And as for this petition, we are going to go, and now I am going to open the public hearing for Council Paper Number 12,00514, a petition from National Grid, Project Number 309 76048, requesting a public hearing for a new singly owned pole location on Mass Avenue and Tulay and maintain underground laterals intersecting public ways as required to make connections with poles and buildings. And we have, I will file the petition without objection. We have a letter from Mr. Lascarbo on this, and again, cards were mailed to the abutters. Mr. DeRose, would you like to speak to us on this, please?
So, we decided last minute, about a week ago, that we will no longer be needing this pole. We're going to be using the two poles going in on Ashton Ave to serve this customer.
So this is no longer an issue?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the council with questions? Anybody in the audience? Okay, at this time, I am going to close the public hearing for 12,00514. Approval of the minutes? Approval of the August 12, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the August 26, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you've reached a two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. I will recognize you and ask you to step up to the mic. Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Lily Ann Zabotsky, 441 East Main Street. I'm not sure if the Affordable Housing Trust ordinance will be voted on today, but as I think you all know, I'm very much in support of that going forward. I think that would be a huge step in terms of getting a group of people together that can really focus on housing solutions in our community. I also wanted to speak on the filling of the vacancy of former Councilor Morrow's seat. I think that, I'm troubled by the idea of leaving that seat vacant because we're so close to January of next year. I think it's important to follow the rules, as I understand they're set forward, and not kind of pick and choose based on when they're convenient. I say this with no intention of putting my name forward for that position, but I also think that points, moments like this point to, you know, why it could be good to do a charter review and see if some of those rules don't make sense anymore. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please raise your hand and be recognized. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Council Paper Number 11,00995-1, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter Z, Zoning 9.4, Smart Growth Overlay District, Sections 9.4.3.2 through 9.4.5.1, passed to a second reading on August 26, 2025, and republished, published as required by law on August 30, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Will abstain.
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Abstain.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Six years.
Okay, motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,00481, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Creating a New Affordable Housing Trust Under Chapter 2, Article 37, postponed from the meeting of August 12, 2025. Do we have an update on the status from the committee? Councilor Bona?
Yeah, so I'm going to request that we postpone this to the next meeting. I will take blame for this. We had a meeting scheduled last week for Wednesday, the 3rd. However, on my post, I listed the correct dates, but I listed one as Wednesday and one as Tuesday, and I was not notified of it till the day before, which didn't give us enough time to correct it, so I had to cancel the meeting. We do have a meeting tomorrow scheduled at 6:00 PM, and hopefully we can finish it up then to bring, for the committee to bring forward a recommendation.
Okay.
So I will make a motion that we postpone till the next meeting.
Second. Motion and a second. Council Blackmer?
Can I ask that if there's language changes, et cetera, that whatever comes back to us to approve or discuss to the whole council has those changes in, preferably in obviously red or something else?
Okay. Council Bona?
Yeah, and Council Fitch can also testify to this. I believe that we did forward some of the revisions and requests, I think if not all, to the solicitor, and we have a response back from that also. So anything that I believe we will be, that will be in front of us will have also have been passed through the solicitor unless we make some last-minute changes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion on the floor to postpone this to the second meeting in September. Is that correct? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council Paper Number 12,00502, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter Z, Appendix B, entitled Dimensional Regulation Schedule, passed to a second reading on August 26, 2025, and published as required by law on August 30, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Oleskiewicz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Eight years.
Council Paper Number 12,00513, An Order Granting Permission for Project Number 311 65216 from National Grid, requesting two pole locations on Ashton Avenue and Tulay and maintain underground laterals intersecting public ways as required to make connections with poles and buildings. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Oleskiewicz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Eight years.
Motion passes. Okay, now on Council Paper Number 12,00504, this is National Grid, Project Number 309 76048, as Mr. DeRose indicated that they will not be pursuing this. Do we still need to, motion to file? Yeah, I think motion to file, yeah. Can we get a motion to file?
Move to file.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Council Paper Number 12,00516, Communication Number 123 from Mayor Maxey, presenting an order to appropriate $89,220 from the City of North Adams Landfill Reserve Account to support the purchase of a new scale at the transfer station. I'm going to file the communication without objection, and Mayor, would you like to speak to us on that, please?
Sure, thank you, President Sapienza. So our existing scale at the transfer station was installed in the 1990s, early 1990s, making it about 35 years old. We have repaired it several times, but at this point, the electrical unit, we are unable to get parts. So we went out to bid, and we were able to solicit a new scale for $89,000 and change. So with that, I respectfully request a transfer out of the equipment, I'm sorry, out of the landfill reserve account. That is the account where when we sell our stickers for the transfer station, that money goes into that, and its purpose is to, for equipment at the transfer station. So with that, I respectfully request a transfer of $89,220 from the landfill reserve account to the public safety transfer station equipment account in that same amount.
Thank you. We'll get to it on the... Council Paper Number 12,00516, In Order to Appropriate $89,220 from the City of North Adams Landfill Reserve Account to Support the Purchase of a New Scale at the Transfer Station. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Council Blackmer, you had your hand up first.
Mayor, in CIP, or the Capitol Outlay, or whatever the heck we want to call it, the scale was in there, but I don't remember the amount.
I think we originally had listed it at about 140.
Okay, so this is a savings?
Yes.
And so that'll kind of check off one box of something we've had?
Yes.
Okay, yay.
Okay, Council Shade?
Yes, throw the chair to the mayor, a couple of questions. Number one, what is the remaining balance on that account?
Sure. So currently, before the transfer, I do have that, I meant to include that in my notes, we have roughly $593,000, and then after this transfer, we will have $50,550.46. I'm sorry, $504,000. So we currently have $593,000, and after that transfer, $504,000.
Thank you. The second question, is the scale new, or how old is the scale that you're purchasing?
Brand-new.
Brand-new?
Yes.
That answers all my questions, thank you.
It's a little less, how do I say it? It's not as high-end as the original scale, but it has enough technology to talk to our system so we can get adequate weights in and out.
Council Green, did you have your hand up?
I did, but I was going to ask the same question about...
Okay, thank you. Council Bona?
Yeah, I threw the chair, I think based on that note, when we probably had that scale last installed, we were also taking a lot more trash up there. So, you know, the numbers are down per tonnage considerably, so probably going a little lesser on the type of scale is probably not going to be that bad. But that being said, do you know they're sort of in the same line up there, but I know within the past couple of decades, we had, we did some work on the buildings, and it seems like they're needing some work again.
Absolutely.
So I didn't know if that's something that's planned to be done fairly soon. Like I say, some of them are looking pretty rough.
Yes, so our, the first part of that is, our first priority is the scale, because that's where we make our money. The second piece of that is, we do need to make some repairs to the drop stations, but we are pricing and looking at compactors and some other recycling type of equipment that may need to be retrofitted into the building or around that building. I did, I think it was you, Council Bona, who sent me some pictures. I did speak to Paul and Tim, and they are going to go and board that section up. What's happening is we're just pushing against the wall, and it's weak, and we're going through the siding. So that is something that we're looking at, but right now, we, our priority is the scale.
If I could continue, and how, if any, is the camera system up there?
You want me to divulge my security?
All right, I know.
We have, we have, we have a system there, but it's easy to jump the gate, or go around the gate, or...
Improvements, or?
We've got to get the scale first, then the building outlined.
All right. Council Oleskiewicz?
Mine is just a quick thanks and a recognition after so many years of me asking about a compactor to maximize weights leaving. We do need to scale the, to make sure we're getting paid for the weight that is coming in, but I think we've been losing a lot of revenue on outbound trucks coming out because we didn't have the capacity to fill these trailers, leaving the property with proper weights, so a compactor will maximize room in these trailers and for what we're paying, because I believe it's a flat rate for every trailer that comes out of there, based on 45,000 pounds worth of trash in each trailer.
So Commissioner Lascarbo, Councilor Oleskiewicz, wanted me to make a point to tell you that we are working on adding compactors for recycling and bag trash drop-off.
Thank you.
Right in his notes.
Thank you very much.
Council Bona?
Did I hear that we might be sourcing some of that out?
Could be.
Okay.
Possibly.
All right.
We're working every single weekend.
Okay. Hey, any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Oleskiewicz?
Yes.
Shade?
Aye.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Eight years.
Okay, motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,00517, Communication Number 124 from Mayor Maxey, presenting a proclamation in recognition of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. I will file the communication and turn it over to Mayor Maxey. Mayor, would you like to speak on this?
Thank you, President Sapienza. I'd like to call Mary Ann King to join me at the podium. Mrs. King is representing the AYJ Fund, who does tremendous work in childhood cancer awareness. So whereas in every corner of our city, the laughter of our children is a reminder of life's most precious gift, yet to too many families have seen the joy interrupted by the weight of childhood cancer. And whereas even one child is to face such a battle, the entire community feels the ache for their struggle, it's not only theirs alone, but for all of us. Whereas September, adorned in gold, becomes a beacon of remembrance and resolve, we honor the young warriors in treatment, lift up the survivors, and hold in our hearts those taken way too soon. Whereas the people of North Adams, together with our neighbors across Northern Berkshire, have always met this hardship with compassion and courage. In this month, we are called once more to join hands as families, schools, caregivers, faith communities, businesses, and leaders unite in hope and steadfast in our commitment to a future where no child is lost to cancer. And whereas we recognize the strength of our caregivers, our siblings, and extended families who walk this journey each day, offering unwavering love and resilience that inspire all of us. And whereas the children who face cancer teach us lessons of courage and perseverance beyond their years, showering us with the power of hope even in our most difficult circumstances. And whereas though the fight against childhood cancer is long and difficult, our unity gives us strength, our advocacy fuels progress, and our love for every child lights the way forward. I now therefore, I'm sorry, I get filled up on these things. I therefore, Jennifer A. Maxey, Mayor of the City of North Adams, do proclaim September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Do you want to say a few words about the fund? There you go. Thank you. You've got to speak into my mic. At the same point. Yes.
So Kathy and Joe send their apologies, because they cannot be here in person tonight. As they are in Boston, they will be advocating tomorrow at the State House for legislation that would create a fund for childhood cancer research in our state. This is always an important evening to us at the AYJ Fund, as our community stands behind all of the children who have been diagnosed with cancer in our community and beyond. This support makes a difference to our families. It helps them through their difficult journey and raises awareness, which leads to more funding for important research. We thank Mayor Maxey, this council, Chief Mark Bailey, and the North Adams Police Department for supporting childhood cancer by redesigning the department patches, which are on sale for the month of December, and all proceeds will be donated to the AYJ Fund, all in our community who support childhood cancer efforts this month and throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
You do it every year. I want the mic on side, if I have anything else.
Council Paper Number 12,00518, Communication Number 125 from Mayor Maxey, appointing, announcing the appointment of Sierra Dowling, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Filling the unexpired term of Jessica Linkcor on the Board of Assessors for a term to expire December 31, 2025, and the appointment of Reed Solomon Lane to the Board of Registars for a term to expire August 24, 2028. I will file the communication without objection. Mayor, would you like to speak on this, please?
Sure, just real quick, we're very excited to have Reed joining the City Clerk's Office on the Registrar of Voters Commission, or Board as we call it. Mr. New Valley, upon retirement, has asked not to continue his term, so Reed is willing to step into that position. We thank Mr. New Valley for his time on the Registrar of Voters. Here tonight, Sierra, do you mind just standing and giving us a wave, is Sierra Dowling. She is our new assessor. She started at the end of August. Sierra holds a Bachelor's of Science in Management, Business Management, from MCLA, and she's worked the last six years for Tourist. She has hit the ground running and is eagerly awaiting for our tax presentation. So I thank both Reed and Sierra for wanting to join the team and look forward to working them, with them in the future.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Council Paper Number 12,00519, Communication Number 126 from Mayor Maxey, requesting consideration of the council to accept Mass General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, which governs the disposition of unclaimed property by a city or town establishing an alternative procedure for disposing of abandoned funds held in the custody of the city. I'm going to file the communication and turn it over to the mayor.
So as it stands right now, we, in my career here, have never been in a situation where we sold things and we had excess funds. So specifically around the sale of the houses on Church Street, we're in the position that we may, after we pay all of our expenses, have some money left over. In normal terms, that money would, you know, be turned over to the state in the unclaimed account, because we've exhausted all of our benefits, specifically on the Church Street, to get owners or next of kin. So by establishing this account, it allows us to hold that money in this access account for a time period that is more secure and more faster than dealing with the state. It's in our own treasury. And then at that point, if it remains unclaimed, it goes to sale of city-owned land. So this is specifically around the foreclosed property that we have received through Land Corps. We had asked the city clerk if we had accepted this chapter in the past, and we haven't. So with this, this allows us to control those own funds internally. There was some new legislation passed, and we talked about it a few council meetings ago, but it doesn't specifically talk about this, and it doesn't specifically talk about the transfer piece. So that's why we're here tonight, to talk about the excess funds, which puts us in a good position, and then also the transfer of the property. So with that, my communication pretty much spells it out. I'm not going to read it back to the record. It's pretty self-explanatory, but we're just looking to establish this holding tank for any excess funds when we sell city-owned land.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the order. Council Paper Number 12,00519, In Order to Accept MGL, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, which governs the disposition of unclaimed property by a city or town establishing an alternative procedure for disposing of abandoned funds held in custody of the city. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Council Shade?
Thank you. Before adopting this, I think we should do more research on the language of the actual MGL law, since it's not included here. I'd feel more comfortable sending this to general government for a meeting to have an open discussion, and then referring it back to the council after that to adopt.
May?
Okay. Council Blackmer?
I also noticed that it includes not just sales, but what we call tailwinds in the business. As someone who spent five years dealing with this, five-plus years, the ability to get these uncashed checks off the books is extremely helpful in the office, and I wholeheartedly support this.
Mayor?
If I could just respond to Council Shade, so we thought that this should be a little more robust, and our Land Corps attorney, Coppola, and Coppola suggested this is... Coppola, and Coppola suggested this is all that we needed.
Okay, Counselor Blackmer first, and then Counselor Shade.
No, I already --
You're already all set.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Shade.
Yes, through the chair to the mayor. I appreciate that. I think this is a good thing. I think it would just be good for us to have a meeting on it before we adopt it. Typically, when we're looking at adopting MGL provisions, we've sent it to committee first to review, to make sure that we're crossing all of our Ts and dotting all of our Is, and making sure everything fits with our own ordinances. I still think that would be the proper procedure here, to send it to committee first and then bring it back for adoption.
Okay. Counselor Bona?
I agree that that is sort of more consistent with what we have done in the past, but I guess through the chair to the mayor, is this going to hold up something? No? So if we have --
As long as, I mean, I didn't mean to cut you off.
If we have this meeting before the next meeting?
Yep, that would be fine.
Should be fine?
Certainly.
Okay.
So the original --
The original motion is --
Would need to be amended to send it to general government and then have it back for --
If I want to.
If you want to.
Okay.
I don't know what the other counselor's pleasure is.
Well, we need a motion to amend this if we want to send this to general government.
Just a point of clarification. So wasn't there a motion on the floor to approve?
There was a motion on the floor to adopt.
Was there a second to that motion?
Yes.
There was.
Okay.
So wouldn't you vote on the motion on the floor, and then if it fails?
No, you can amend it. You could amend it either way.
Move to amend. Move to send this to general government with a return date of the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend, so that this is sent to general government and returned at the next meeting. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All in favor of the amendment, sending it to general government, and returning it to the next meeting?
Aye.
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 No.
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 A roll call.
Yep. Let's do a roll call.
Blackmer?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Run the wording one more time.
To, the amendment is to send it to general government and return it to the next council meeting, which should be September 22.
It won't hold anything up?
It will not hold anything up. The mayor just indicated it will not hold anything up.
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
No.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Okay, now we go back to the original motion. As amended. And this will be a roll call vote.
The original motion was to adopt a --
Right.
As amended.
As amended, yes. Counselor Blackmer?
I'm thinking the confusion is that it's being adopted, so you can't adopt as amended because --
You're sending it.
Because you're sending it back.
Okay.
Well, if we voted yes on this, it still needs to come back to a second vote anyway, doesn't it?
No, it's not published. It's not an ordinance.
No.
I mean, I guess the other option would be to go back and rescind, and then change the motion. So I'll rescind my original motion.
Okay, the original motion was rescinded.
We're all set.
No, we just go forward and get rid of the whole thing on the adoption, and somebody else can make the motion.
Yep.
Move to send to general government with a return date to the next meeting?
Okay, motion to send to general government and return to the next meeting.
Second.
And we have a second. And let's do another roll call, please.
Do another vote.
Yep.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Sapienza?
Yes.
We have seven yeas.
Seven yeas. This will go back to general government. Council Paper Number 12,005-20, Communication Number 127, from Mayor Maxi, requesting approval for council, approval of council, for the sale of four properties as outlined in the orders for 116 Church Street, 124 Church Street, and Arnold Place Lot 130, Church Street, and one lot on High Street. I'm going to file the communication without objection and turn it over to the mayor.
Great, thank you, President Sapienza. So exciting times for us. The Church Street property in particular had several, several viewings. I think we got close to 25 offers on the property. We went through a screening process. The first one was who wanted home inspections and who didn't. So of course, the people who didn't want home inspections moved up because of the conditions of the building. Were they a cash customer or looking for financing? And then, pretty much what the reuse was. So in my communication, you see what the selling price is versus what is due. Keep in mind, we still have to pay some legal and closing costs out of those numbers. But basically, I'm going to work, start on 116 Church Street. That property, we are under, have an agreement pending with Mr. Buntick, who plans to restore it and turn it into a residence. Question is what, whether it be a two-family or one-family. On 130 Church Street, Mr. Mahoney owns several properties in North Adams. He is an architect by trade and has two business partners who are builders and historians, who specialize in restoring historic homes. Their goal is to revitalize that property and likely turn it into a two-family pending further evaluation. On 124 Church Street, the building itself and the Arnold Street Lot, that is going to go to Mr. Hanukkah. He is very similar to Mr. Mahoney and is very interested in restoring that and possibly make that into a private home. On High Street, that parcel is just a lot that has been filled with trash. The Rawls family hopes to restore that into green space or additional parking, but the primary purpose that they're interested in is to prevent it from being used as a dumping ground and to enhance their property, which abuts it. So with that, as I mentioned before, the new legislation talks about how we're supposed to do every step in the process, but it doesn't really address whether I need council approval or not. And again, Dave Coppola from Coppola and Coppola, they do all of our Land Corps legal work, has recommended that we just bring it back to the council and seek your approval. So if there's any title issues down the road, we've done everything that we can as a municipality. So with that, I'm seeking your approval to sell the properties that are listed on your communication, and we can move forward and get these back on the tax rolls.
Okay. We'll get to that under the order.
Well, the order has each one listed separately, I think, and this is --
Do you have a general question?
This is the general question.
Okay, Counselor Blackmer.
Are there any clawbacks?
No.
If there's no, if they don't do what they say they're going to do, and the properties just sit there, and that's probably because the law doesn't allow us to do that.
Correct, no clawbacks.
I mean, $58,000 is a nice chunk to put in the sale and account, so I'm hoping that the people do what they say they're going to do, and that they also, other than paying up the money, do they have, they'll have a certain deadline to pay us, and if they don't pay us?
Yep.
Then we can say, okay, no, and we can start over.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're covered.
And just keep in mind that when we get the proceeds from the sale, we pay our expense, we pay ourselves, we pay our expenses, and then the net result will go into the excess fund. Right. Until the time period, and then go into sale of city land.
Okay, Counselor Shade.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to the mayor, thank you for getting any of this off the books. I think this is great. Whether they fix the properties or not, they still go back on the tax rule, which means we press our collected taxes on them again. Taxpayers of the city, so either way, the taxpayers are going to win.
Okay, Counselor Breen, you had your hand up.
Yeah. This is such a wonderful thing. A question on remainder money. Is it, if they're not purchased at full value, can that still be considered an expense, so it doesn't go to the state, or?
No, it won't. If we establish the excess funds, it doesn't go to the state. It sits in our custody, and we have to hold it until, unless someone comes out of the woodwork and tries to make claim, which at this point would be very difficult, because the Land Corps has done extensive research on these properties.
Say that property is assessed at $100,000, and you've got $50,000. And that $50,000 that you didn't get, that's not lost money?
No, not in this situation, because they're foreclosed out. The goal is to try to make ourselves whole, as far as what's owed for taxes.
Okay, okay, okay.
I believe Counselor Bona, you had your hand up next.
Yep, and Fitch did too, so I don't know.
I think it was you and then Counselor Fitch.
One, I'll be happy to approve all these as they come forward. I'm excited, as probably many of us are, to see these buildings get protected and hopefully revitalized. I was just curious, I'm actually glad to see that we have different individual buyers, but I was curious whether any of them that wanted all of them, and then the city just decided it was better to give them individual?
We, the first round of bids, we got several package prices. And what concerned me about that is we're putting all of our eggs in one basket, so we wanted to spread the risk out. And then with that, we ultimately hoped to make more money individually than we would have as a package. You know, there were probably like five people who bid the whole, all four lots, but we were more interested in spreading the risk out. And we, because we want those properties restored and, you know, create more housing and back on the tax rules for sure. So that was the philosophy we took. If we didn't get any individual bids, we probably would have explored the package deal, but I didn't think that was in our best interest.
If I could continue, is there anything that would stop, let's say, one of the buyers, once they own it, to then just resell it to one of the others?
Nope.
So once they own it, they can do whatever they want with it?
Think of it just like your own personal dwelling.
Counselor Fitch?
Just, yeah, through the chair to the mayor as well. Several people asked me just about the review process and, you know, what the factors were, and you already gave, you know, some light into that. But did you request that folks submit what they hope to do with them as a part of that?
Yes.
Was that factored in?
Yes, so we did ask, and some of them go with standard purchase and sales forms, and, or sales agreements, and others wrote quite lengthy notes about each property. And that's why we were impressed with these buyers.
Just one more follow-up question through the chair to the mayor as well. Am I correct in assuming that all of them know the state of the houses as they are and understand the costs?
Yes, all of these buyers have toured or had an agent of their company tour.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, mayor.
And Counselor, President Sapienza, if I may, I really want to thank Pam Torg from Bishop &amp; West. We did an RFP to retain a real estate agent, and I'm not quite sure Pam really understood the time element. Her phone was ringing off the hook so much, to the point where they had to put additional staff on these houses, which is a good thing for us. But she did a really great job in showing and really marketing to people. And what's great to me is it all came back to, there are people who are connected to North Adams in different ways. And I also really want to thank Tara Jacobs from the Governor's Council. I was completely frustrated about the status and how long it was taking in Land Corps, specifically around the Church Street properties. And we met with Tara and provided her a list of things that had been in Land Corps for a very long time, and she went right into Land Corps, kind of slapped it on their desk and said, could you give me an update? And mysteriously, everything moved the next day. So I really want to thank Governor's Council Tara Jacobs, as well as Pam Torg, for helping us get through this. When we first saw the new legislation, we were like, oh, no, another hoop to jump through. But it was actually a decent process, and we're very excited to see what happens with these properties.
Thank you. Counselor Bona?
Yeah, I'd like to echo that about Pam. Set aside that she's a real estate agent. I mean, even though she lives in Stamford, she's a pretty strong North Adams ambassador, so I'm sure it had little to do with probably the money she didn't make off these sales, because they weren't really big sales for probably the time that went into it, but, I mean, you talk to Pam, and she markets and talks up this city with or without having property here. She loves the city, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I just want to say that I frequently walk by these places on my evening walks, and I am glad to see that there's, something is finally moving. And again, I want to echo the mayors, Pam Torg and Tara Jacobs, for getting the ball rolling, so to speak, and hopefully we'll see some improvements at these properties within the near future. And I look forward to seeing Church Street brought back to the original glory it was back in the days when mill owners and business owners, factory owners and stuff resided on that street. And it was a grand street at one time, and I believe that --
Still is.
It is a grand street, and it would be made even better by the upkeep and the maintenance of these properties. And with that, I do have a question to the mayor. I understand that some of the expenses that we will be taking out will be the brokerage fees that are paid to the railter normally.
Yep, the brokerage, the legal fees, as well as any recording costs at the registry.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further questions? Counselor Blackmer?
I just want to say, I'm, it's possible that although it's an added step, before we would have just put them out to auction.
Right.
And we don't have a lot of control over, they have to pay within 30 days, they have to have $5,000 check of good funds, you don't have any control. Here, by doing an RFP or an RFQ, you actually get to have an idea of what they're going to do, and they're not just somebody who's going to come in and put in the highest bid. And then, and as long as it's a dollar over what's owed, we kind of have to take it. Here, we actually had some control. So as much as the law is kind of a pain on one level, it, I think it worked in our favor this time.
I personally thought that the new law was an extra step in the process, but based on what Counselor Blackmer has heard and what I've seen with this process, I'm quite impressed with having, with the law and having a real estate dealer list these properties and sell them like they were a private home. Okay, moving on. Council Paper Number 12,005-20-1, An Order Authorizing the Execution of the Purchase and Sales Agreement in the Amount of $54,001 with Selco Buntick, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, for 116 Church Street property, further identified on Assessors' Map 152, Parcel 119, which was acquired by the City of North Adams through a tax lien foreclosure issued by Massachusetts Land Corps on February 12, 2025, docket number 19TL000384. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Do I have a roll call, please?
This will be a roll call anyways.
Thank you.
And no discussion, this will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Aye.
Wilkinson?
Abstain.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,005-20-2, An Order Authorizing the Execution of the Purchase and Sales Agreement in the Amount of $85,000 with James Honnaker for 124 Church Street and 0 Arnold Place, properties further identified on Assessors' Map Number 152, Parcel 121, which was acquired by the City of North Adams through a tax lien foreclosure issued by Massachusetts Land Corps on February 12, 2025, docket number 19TL000384. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Fitch?
Yes.
Olewskiewicz?
Yes.
Shade?
Hi.
Wilkinson?
Abstain.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven yeas?
Motion passes. Council paper number 12,0052-3. An order authorizing the execution of the purchase and sales agreement in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars with Breen M. Mahoney for 130 Church Street property, further identified on assessor's map 152 parcel 117, which was acquired by the City of North Adams through a tax lien foreclosure issued by Massachusetts Land Corps on February 12, 2025, docket number 19TL000384. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Blackmore?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Olewskiewicz?
Yes.
Shade?
Hi.
Wilkinson?
Abstain.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven yeas?
Motion passes. Council paper number 12,0052-4. An order authorizing the execution of the purchase and sales agreement with Thomas A. Rawls?
Rawls.
Rawls. And Kathy J. Rawls for Zero High Street, formerly known as 2931 High Street property, further identified on assessor's map 127 parcel 65A, which was acquired by the City of North Adams through a tax lien foreclosure issued by Massachusetts Land Corps on February 12, 2025, docket number 19TL000384. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? This will be a roll call.
Point of clarification?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The order that you just read doesn't include the price it's being sold for. Can you state that for the record, please?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
The property on High Street is being sold for eighteen thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Councillor Bona?
Yep, not specific to this, it would run back in general, but I do want to, since this is the last one, also thank the mayor for bringing this to us, be it the advice of the attorney or not. I think, you know, I always like when these come through the council.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Did you ever hand up? No?
Did anybody? No, I didn't see anybody, okay.
Blackmore?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Olewskiewicz?
Yes.
Shade?
Hi.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, council paper number 12,00521. A communication from President Sapienza regarding the resignation of City Councillor Deanna Morrow. As of September 1, 2025, I will file the communication without objection, and I will read my communication. It says, Dear fellow councillors, councillor Deanna Morrow, through a written letter, has resigned her term for the city council effective September 1, 2025. I ask that we acknowledge her resignation with the attached letter. I would also like, right, excuse me, can't talk. Would also like to recognize councillor Morrow's service to the City of North Adams on the city council and on the council's Public Safety Committee. And I will quickly read councillor Morrow's letter, former councillor Morrow's letter. It says, Dear fellow councillors, Mayor Maxi and community members, I have decided to resign my position as city councillor on September 1. Unfortunately, circumstances have arisen that require my attention elsewhere. It is a bittersweet decision that does not come easily. I thank the community for having their trust in me to serve this beautiful city. My fellow councillors for being there for guidance and for the great years I had serving with you, and Mayor Maxi for leading with confidence and a love for the city that goes above and beyond. I have learned so much from this position and will take that knowledge with me wherever I end up next. With love, councillor Morrow. Council paper number 12,00522. Communication from President Sapienza regarding the vacant city council seat due to resignation of councillor Deanna Morrow. I will file the communication without objection.
Objection.
Yes.
I don't think you need to file it, I think we need to discuss it.
Okay.
So I'm objecting to your filing it.
All right. Can I read my communication?
Yes, you can, but I just wanted to know that I was objecting.
I will read my communication. Dear fellow councillors, with the resignation of councillor Deanna Morrow, I recommend that the council leave the seat empty for the remainder of the term. We only have three months left in our current term. The empty seat will not put the council in danger of not having a quorum. Sincerely, President Sapienza. And-
Chairman?
Chairman?
Yes, councillor Blackmore?
Okay, so, one, I don't agree with this statement, obviously, or I wouldn't have objected. What we've done in the past, when we've had a resignation kind of after budget season, we have, and I can think of two or three examples, we have, as a council, voted to appoint the highest ranking non-incumbent at the meeting after the certified election. So this would mean, if, this would mean, obviously, we can't do it because it's not on the agenda to vote on that, we'd have to vote next time, so there would be two missed meetings. The person would come in at the beginning of November and be able to participate in two November meetings and two December meetings before taking office. And since, one, it's been past practice, two, I think it makes sense because November and December, we're going to be looking at setting the tax, setting the tax rate, the tax classification hearing. We'll be looking at now, because we changed the ordinance, we'll be looking at the CIP and different issues that may come up at the end of the year with changes in laws or whatever. Also, we get into that time of year, we get into illness, we get into vacations, we might not always have. I mean, I remember, we went four months in one term, at the beginning of the term, where we didn't have nine councillors. Literally, every week, someone was missing. And I'm not saying, I mean, eight councillors, we can do it, but what if we had had a four to four tie? Four to four tie means it's a no vote. So do we really want to put ourselves in the position? Can we handle two meetings or three meetings? I think, but given that we've done this several times in the past, I think that's the best route, which means we need to put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Olewskiewicz?
I fully support councillor Blackmore's concerns, because as she talked about in the past, there's two people in this room who did benefit from resignations, and I am one of them, so.
I'm another.
And I did come back to win two more elections, but I believe that it should be, we should go down to the line, the line of the people who did put in the legwork and ran in the last election.
The current election.
Well, it'd be the, yeah, this election, this year, yes, yeah, yeah. No, I agree, I think that it would be a good thing to do. As councillor Olewskiewicz and councillor Wilkinson, we were seated because of somebody resigning, and we, through the process. Councillor Bona?
Yep, again, I will agree with that, and I'm not sure who will put it on the next agenda.
I will.
And, but precedent has been set several times, I think, on this over the decades, and it really allows the people at the vote to decide who's going to fill that spot.
Councillor Shade?
I think if we're going to fill the seat, we should do it by the rules we set up in our council rules, and our council rules specifically state to take resumes and allow applicants to apply, not to wait several meetings, to miss several meetings, and then appoint based on who gets elected. I think that we should follow the process, or we shouldn't. It's one or the other. I don't think we should half just because precedent was set. Precedent isn't a good reason to keep doing things when we have specific rules that tell us what to do.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Well, I'm a pro of this, but to me, it's very important that whoever sits on council is somebody that was elected, not somebody appointed, not somebody who brought in a resume and the council says, oh yeah, this person is better than that person on a resume. No, we are all elected individuals, elected by the citizens of North Adams. Anybody that's placed on this council should be elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Blackmore?
Given that, my issue is that the learning curve, just on how the meetings are run, is longer than a few meetings. And if we appoint somebody, obviously, we're not going to do it at the next meeting, so it's not going to be till October. So they're going to be one, so if we were to do it and appoint someone who's not elected, they're going to serve for six meetings at the, probably at the most, and then be gone. It seems like a waste of time. And the other issue I have with appointing someone who's running is that, then we're deciding, we're giving somebody a leg up, and I don't know how I feel about that. I understand, you said it's in the council rules, and I just, I think they're a guideline, and I don't think, we should have, I guess, considered this option considering it's happened several times in the past.
Okay. Councillor Shade?
I don't disagree with anything that's been said. I think being elected is very important, but I do think we should update our council rules as soon as possible to reflect that, if that's the will of the body to use that as procedure.
Councillor Bona?
I'm trying to find it, but I felt like at one point, again, through the chair, and maybe councillor Blackmore can remember, but I felt at one point, we had in the rules that after a certain amount of the term, so, for example, if someone dropped out right at the beginning, we did do that process. However, when, I thought it was after a full year or something like that, we, it got changed to where, because again, in this particular case, if we were to take resumes and stuff, we'd actually be waiting longer than probably if they picked someone from the election. And however, at the beginning, the reason we did that is because, let's just say, we have this election and there's a 10th person, and then two months later, someone withdraws, or, no, sorry, a year and a half later, someone withdraws. The reason why we would do it with a resume and just saying, taking the 10th person then, is because a lot can happen in a year or fifteen months. I can recall a candidate who came in 10th, who, after a year and a half, got arrested and things like that happened, where it was very likely that if there was an election at that time, that person would not have been elected. So things can happen, but in this particular case, people are going to be electing someone within three weeks, four weeks. And I think it's a fresh person to pick from versus waiting a year, so. But I could be wrong, I just felt like we put something in the rules once that said if it's before so many months, we do it this way, and after so many months, we do it that way.
Councillor Blackmore?
I think it's been a, it was never codified, because technically, we do not have to, although it's councillor Wilkinson's preference and belief that it should be someone who's elected, it doesn't have to be. When Clark Billings gave his, resigned, it was in September, although he hadn't been to a meeting since May, but he officially resigned in September. That's when we did the, that was the first time in my experience that we used the, this procedure, and it was, Dave Bond was, took office. And then, when councillors Sapienza, Wilkinson, and Olewskiewicz were all appointed, it was in the first year, I think, and if not, it was into, it was before, like, August of that year. I think kind of September becomes the push, the, this, September, because also, like, people, at that point, people have already, they're running for office. We just, it just seems to make sense, particularly in this case, because by the time we make this appointment, it's going to be a couple of meetings, or they're going to have six meetings for the year. I think that the learning curve is a little longer than six years, and I, as I said, I feel uncomfortable appointing someone who's running. Not that they're not great candidates, I just feel like it, like, we're putting our thumb on the scale if we do that. And that's, you know, we personally want to endorse people, that's great, but to sit here and vote and put them there, I think is, I don't like it. So that's just my, that's my background. I don't remember change, I don't remember having it in the rules, because there was a big discussion of it should be the 10th person, and somebody else said it shouldn't, and sometimes it was, and people said it always was, but I could go back and point to several times when it wasn't the 10th person. And I think councillor Bona brought up good facts that after a year and a half, someone's situation may have changed, so you don't automatically appoint the 10th person. So I just, I think we need to put it on the agenda for the next meeting and have a robust conversation about it when we can actually vote on it.
Thank you. I also want to add to the point, too, that if, for the, for instance, if we did take letters of, letters and resumes, what would happen is we would have to have them in place by September 29th, if I'm not, if I'm correct, because the ballots have to be printed or the information on the ballots has to be submitted by a certain date, and I believe it's September 29th, and Clerk Lee Nazio can correct me on that. Is that the?
Point of order? If we appoint someone, it doesn't change the ballot?
Yeah, it does, because they'd be an incumbent if they're running.
Yeah, that's the point I'm trying to get to, is that if they are appointed, say, one of the new candidates are appointed, now, there's, after that date, they're still going to be listed as a new candidate, they're not going to be listed as an incumbent, and vice versa. A candidate that is pulled in from the pool is going to be listed as, if it's done before the 29th, which I don't believe will happen, could be listed as an incumbent, and they've only been on the council for one or two meetings. So that's another point to consider, too.
That would be an issue.
Yeah.
As far as being able to get our ballots and get them on time for everything.
Right. And I believe there was a deadline that we had to have the ballots solidified so that when we submit them, that was the final deadline? Is there a deadline?
Well, I'm usually ahead of it, like, I've already sent the ballot in.
Okay.
And waiting for it to come back, and then it kind of goes back and forth a couple of times.
Okay, thank you.
Because we need, we need them for when our mail-in voting starts, so.
Okay, thank you. So there is a deadline, and if we do the appointment through letters of interest, okay. So in this case, I will be filing a communication for next week to discuss this further. Councillor Fitch?
There's something else, too, to consider, and we can have this conversation in our next meeting if we wish to, but what happens if the 10th highest vote getter is not interested or not available, and what happens if the 11th is? Because there are only two people that we're talking about right here.
Thank you. Could be more, depending on how the election goes. Okay, moving on. Council paper number 12,0053. A communication from President Sapienza regarding appointment of councillor Wilkinson to serve on the Public Safety Committee as replacement for councillor Morrow. And that is the end of the regular agenda, committee reports and minutes. Hearing none. We have no taxi licenses. Moving on to open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call you to the mic.
Hello, Lillian Zabatski, 441 East Main Street. I had a couple of questions about the Church Street property and that process. So in particular, I'm trying to understand the budget and Land Corps and these items, so I'm curious how much money we've spent getting the properties through Land Corps. I see, like, some- I see, like, some, a couple hundred dollars in filings to the Land Court, but then I imagine that the legal fees, that what we pay to the lawyer is the bulk of the cost of getting things through Land Court. And you mentioned... The mayor mentioned Land Court Attorney Capola in Capola, so I'm trying to figure out where could I find that in the budget? And I was very... I was confused about the excess equity bit. So those properties were owned by someone, that person died, and then the Land Court process tried to find heirs. And when that Land Court process was completed, that those properties, my understanding, were passed to the city, and the city is then going... Selling these properties. An heir could potentially come forward, I know it's unlikely because of the Land Court process, and say, "This is the equity that I'm owed." But at what point does that end? Like, if the properties are passed... Are sold to someone, could...
No.
Could the heirs come forward at that point? Or am I misunderstanding this whole thing? Which is very possible. And then, do we have an idea of how many back taxes would have been owed on these properties had they been in possession of someone? Is that a number that we know? And then finally, unrelated, at the last meeting, I asked about the Sullivan School sale and that. Okay, so thank you. I'm excited for the update on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for open forum? Okay, moving along. Mayor's updates. Mayor, would you like to update us on anything tonight?
Sure, I just want to remind everyone, and I'm sure we're aware of this, that the college is back in session, and that we are increasing patrols on Church and Ashland Street. We've had several close calls of people not stopping for students and residents in the crosswalk. I know that's a common theme throughout our city, specifically in our downtown, but I just want to remind residents that there are students crossing regularly on Church Street near Berkshire Towers, and also near the townhouses on Ashland Street, and we will be increasing patrols in those areas, as well as working with MCLA to put in some new traffic calming equipment. Also, a reminder that Fresh Grass will be in town starting on Friday, September 19th. They will be here the 19th, the 20th, and the 21st. And as you may have seen, Maximilian has mobilized on the Brown Street Bridge, so we will start seeing construction there. And to address Lillian's question from last meeting, MOKA's due diligence process has been extended until October 22nd. We felt that they needed some additional time to do some more testing and exploring of the site. At that point, on the 22nd, we also need to do more work with our legal team on the transfer of a slice of land and picking it up somewhere else, which we're pretty much almost there, but we have to do all the legal-beagle stuff. So right now, we're waiting for the due diligence period, Lillian, to finish, and that has been extended till October 22nd. After that, I'll ask MOKA for an update as to where we are. We'll probably know where we are a little bit more with legal, and then we'll provide another update. And I can answer some of your other questions, I'll email you, okay? So that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next liaison updates, counselor updates. Counselor Blackmer?
Liaison report, sort of, for the planning board. The planning board is continuing their work on the reviewing the capital overlay plan, AKA the capital improvement plan. We're kind of not sure... It's called different things in different places. They've met... They have an ad hoc committee that's met several times. They talked at the planning board meeting last night. They have several questions that they have sent to the mayor, hoping to get some answers, some of its terminology. I think we're going to try and put together an actual, like, glossary of terms for things that most of us have dealt with, like stabilization... Stabilization fund, enterprise fund, different things, some of those things, capital asset. There's a lot of definitions out there, and so I think we're going to try and work on some definitions, but also keep in mind that the city council has to approve this by the end of the year, and I hope that we're going to be doing some work on it, not at the last minute, because I know everybody gets busy in December with their personal lives. So I'm hoping we're going to continue to keep working on it and the planning board.
Thank you. Counselor Fitch?
Yeah, sure, through the chair to the mayor, actually. Could we hear a little bit about what we're doing for Fresh Grass and how we're preparing for Fresh Grass?
I'll be answered this.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
So we've... I... We had a concert this past weekend, so we already have high areas of non-allowed parking already posted. We will have incident command in the complex and also outside the complex, starting Friday afternoon through Sunday evening. We will welcome Fresh Grass on the marquee. We will send out a notice of any change in traffic patterns. We won't be closing really any roads except for when the concerts let out at night, but I think residents should be aware that traffic will probably slow down in the downtown area, specifically around Marshall Street. We will be closing Center Street Lot. It will be open to businesses, but we will be charging concertgoers for parking in Center Street and St. Anthony's. I believe the church will also be doing parking as well. It's really business as usual for us. You'll see, you know, more trash barrels out and more people floating around, but really, most of it occurs in the complex. But we certainly will have additional staff on in the complex, so it won't be taking away from our normal patrols. And it's just, really, traffic's going to be slowed down with people coming and going. So buy your groceries early.
Thank you.
Counselor Breen?
I'd like to say to the mayor, the Church Street... Being old enough to remember what they used to look like is just outstanding. It's really a million-dollar project, because when they're all done, we know the cost. It's going to be a very, very beautiful thing right at the top of Main Street. It's wonderful, and it's better to have four different people, you know? I can't say enough about it. The other thing that I'd like to focus on, I'd like to take the "for sale" sign. You got four more places you could... What's the plan? Is there any that are coming along that you...
Yes, Mayor.
We have been very, very aggressive in the sense of with properties who people have abandoned. We, obviously, people who are struggling to pay their taxes, we enter into payment agreements. We have several parcels, off the top of my head, Jessica, maybe you know, I think we have, like, 52 different parcels in Land Court. Most of them are land parcels that don't qualify under land of low value, but we recognize that there's a need for housing, there's an interest in people to invest here, or local residents in reinvesting. So it's a long process. Again, Tara Jacobs has been really great in helping us facilitate that, but there are things in Land Court that I entered during my career here. And we can push and push and push, but like every other agency, they're short-staffed, too. But we are seeing our things move faster. Assessor, I'm sorry. Collector, Link Court has done a tremendous job with working with Capola in a short time in the tax collector role, in really organizing and prioritizing, you know, properties that are repetitive complaint areas, properties that people have showed interest in. So we're working that list as fast as we can, but we are at the mercy of the court system. Anything that we can certify under land of low value, or anything that we own that people are interested in, we're trying to move. But right now, our big focus is moving Sullivan School. But we will have probably maybe one or two more coming up before winter. We did just get a decree on a property, which I don't... I mean, it's public information, but I don't want to publicly announce because there is an appeal process. But we're really pushing on those. We're doing the best we can, but we are at the mercy of the court.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. Any further counsel concerns? Counselor Bona?
Yeah, through the chair. Mayor, you mentioned how the... We had the concert last week, and signs were put up, and those signs are still up, and it sounds like they'll be up till at least the other concerts. So the question is, are those enforceable at this time, or only when the events are happening?
Well, they're always enforceable because our ordinance says no parking in some of those areas. But they are enforceable now, in the sense that they are posted. But most of those areas are no parking anyways, but it provides us another tool. The problem that we have specifically in the Holden-Racewell area is people come into town and they don't know that the ordinance says you can't park on the easterly side or the westerly side, so the signs help with that. I think all of us will remember the year that it got away from us on River Street, and we were down to one lane of traffic because people were parking on both sides. So we're trying to rectify that so it doesn't impact our residents.
All right. I thought some of the signs were in areas, though, that were really sort of temporary for the events, but...
Right, there are some that are temporary, but there are... Majority of them are in signs where there's no parking anyways.
So if someone does park there, let's say, tonight, they could get a ticket?
Could, if they're in an area that's designated no parking.
Thank you. Any other counsel concerns? Moving on, Clerk Leonazio, do you have any city clerk updates for us? Okay, no. All right, any correspondence? Counselor Fitch?
Yes, I had a meeting with Northern Berkshire Community Coalition, Amber, their director over there, last week, and she sent me a schedule of their community forum events that are upcoming from September through June. I placed several copies over on a seat in the audience there and handed them out... Well, the clerk, thank you, handed them out to city council members and to the mayor. Amber just articulated to me, basically, that she would love as much community participation and political leader participation as possible, so I told her I'd print these and have them here.
Thank you. Any further correspondence? Hearing none. I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned.